All right. Good evening and welcome to City Council Conference of Tuesday, May 14th, 2024. One item on the agenda, that is discussion regarding the continuation of the Home Energy Rating System, HERS, Energy Rating Index, ERI Pilot Program. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate you hearing us today. And again, I always appreciate every council person that serves. It's a tough job, and I do mean it. Thank you to everyone of you.
Thanks, Greg.
A lot of you probably have heard of this program before. It's been around for a number of years. I think where we are going in are, let's see, the sixth time, I believe, this thing has came up for renewal now. This program was created back in 2018, and it was at the behest of a group of people, kind of a mix. Folks who were energy code advocates were for the program. The building community themselves was largely for the program as well. So there was kind of a blended of interest, and council had a strong interest in pushing, you know, energy efficiency buildings through the community. And so several meetings occurred, and they devised a program that works, basically a credit program. So it's not a code requirement to participate in this. It's an elective program for builders who want to build above code. And if they do build above code, they can achieve an incentive. So that's kind of the foreground of where we got. Again, started in 2018. It's been renewed six times, and it's currently set to expire on June 30th of this year. The last time we met on the program was back in June of '22. We updated the program for an additional two years by resolution, and we changed the benchmark score for what the program creates as the baseline for the incentive. And I'll speak to that a little bit. The way the program works itself is it is a building permit credit. So one of the fees that we have is called a building permit fee. It is 14 cents per square foot of what we call project area. So if you had a 2,000-square-foot home with a 600-square-foot garage, we view that as 2,600 feet. And participants, if they fully pass the program, they're eligible for, you know, that 14 cents back, or they'd get a credit back of $364 towards their permit fees. The current benchmarks you'll see there on the left, it, the 57 is the minimum benchmark. And I apologize, it says 51 in the top line there. Please disregard that. 57 is, in fact, the minimum program score to achieve compliance. And if they get a score of 57, they get 50% credit. A score of 47 gets them 100% credit. And so you might be asking yourself, seems a little backwards. And that is because the lower the score, the more efficient the home. The way this score was actually created was years ago, the 2006 Energy Code was one of the first published energy codes that we recognize. And a home built to the 2006 standard is considered a 100 on that sliding scale. So if you were to get 100, you'd be, you know, that's a home built in 2006. A zero on that score platform is a home that literally uses no renewable energy whatsoever. So that's kind of the slide. A little bit of data from this last go-around, and this data is current from the last time we renewed, back in July of '22, to current. We've had 220 folks apply for the program. Four of them received the full credit, scoring a 47. Eighty-two of the homes scored, got partial credit by getting a 57 or better, or lower in that case. We had 19 that withdrew that you can pretty well assume scored over a 57, so they weren't going to get credit anyway. And then 115 applicants that are still currently active in the program right now. If you reference back to the memo, you'll, you can see more detailed history about the program and its scores that we've had over the year. The previous score benchmark we had was a 51. So we kind of, we kind of jockeyed the score on the program a little bit. Originally, it was a 64. Because of a lot of indecision at the time at the state, what the score would be, we made it a 51, not knowing what the state would do. The state has now adopted and updated the energy codes and set it to a 64 as the minimum state standard. So our 57 score that we're currently working with was seven points better than what that, the current state standard is. So it's, if we, if you look at the memo, though, you'll see the stats at the 51. They were not real positive, meaning a lot of the builders were not getting any credit whatsoever. It kind of, kind of, I wouldn't say it was unfair. It was an above-code program, but we were having very few, had very few enrollment, you know, actually achieve any positive score. And honestly, I think it probably kind of depressed the numbers even for future enrollments, because it was just that challenging that like, well, gosh, why am I going to even enroll, waste my time enrolling in the program? So 57 has been a much better score, kind of based on those numbers. Four people achieving full compliance, but 87 of them had that bunch getting partial credit. Seems to me that it's in a pretty good place where construction trends, construction abilities are right now. A little bit about energy codes in the state, because they will impact this program. The OUBCC, the Oklahoma Uniform Building Code Commission, is the state body that adopts codes for all jurisdictions, not just Norman, all jurisdictions. They set that minimum standard. And I always think that's important. You all, as council folks, know that. So if you, if you ever do hear Norman has harder codes or different codes, we're following the same code. The rest of the state follows. We have an amendment or two, but very small. In September of '22, that is when the state did update last, and that's when the state standard became a 64. And that's what our, that's what our current benchmark by resolution is at with the 57. Currently, at the state level, the, the state is, is beginning review of the 2024 Energy Code, and it should include reviewing that, should, should include reviewing that energy code as well. I say it should, because normally when a code is published, they publish that code with, the entire code book, but they also publish the energy standard. There has been a lot of back and forth at the committees, the National Committee that adopts that code, and they have not even published the Chapter 11 or the energy portion of that code. So it's possible, because of that indecision occurring nationally, that when they go to adopt this 2024 at the state level, they may or may not have an update to that code. And that's really, obviously, way out of our hands. This slide kind of gives you us an idea of where the history of that ERI score number, the HERS ERI score number. Again, you can see back 2006, the standard was at 100. Generally, the trend is that number gets lower and lower over time, although there's been, there's been a little bit of jockeying with that. There has been a code cycle or two where they have shifted that number. But you can see right now where we're landing in there. The state standard is a 64. We're hitting that 57, which is in line with the unamended version of the 2018 code. And that is one thing the state can do and has done, that they have taken sections of the energy code and have moved that standard score a little bit. So they changed the, the standard published was 20, in the 2018 code is a 57. They changed the code at the state level to that 64. To give you a little bit of idea about what kind of the trends in the region are too, Texas has a statewide code adoption as well. And their minimum standard for ERI, this is just the minimum standard, is the scores you see there. So they're now escalated their minimum standard to the, a score of a 59 being the minimum home that can be built in Texas at this point. And I have not seen an update to this, but inevitably, they'll, they'll need to update beyond year 2025 if they have not already. That's a little bit of background. And so we, we've done this program, as I've said in the past, by resolution. And so the idea of the resolution was valid. You know, it was a new program, lots of uncertainty with it, how it was going to work, how staff would deliver it, would scores be good, would the benchmark scores where they needed to be. And so that's kind of how the program has existed to date. And one of the options is to potentially extend this program again by resolution. If we, if you all chose to do that by resolution, we would probably keep the benchmark score, I would think, at a 57. But obviously, we'd be, you know, that will be your direction that we would follow to either change or up that score or lower the score. But that is one option we can do. If we were to do it, I would, I would make a certain suggestion that we do it for another two-year period. If, for some reason, in that time, that we found out that the state updated, eighth updated the standard, and it made our 57 score basically wrong, because somehow that became the state minimum standard, I, I think there's no question, I'd have to come back to you all and suggest an amendment. So we're rewarding above code, not just meeting the code. But that is an option. You know, I'll be honest, my preferred recommend option is, you know, we have enough data. We've been in the program for all this time. This adopted, you know, if, if this council is interested and likes the program, likes the idea of the credit, let's adopt it by ordinance, you know, instead of having to come back to the table every two years and me give you the pretty much the same PowerPoint. The thought would be, hey, let's, let's just make this program permanent, put it in place. And there's lots of advantages to doing that. If, if the goal is to reward energy credits, I think by making it an ordinance, one, you'll stabilize it. So it's something that, you know, a builder won't have to wonder or worry if the program is going to change or be there for future cycles. They can kind of plan on it. Frankly, our program is, it's not a huge incentive, right? It's an incentive, but it's not a huge, huge incentive. But it's, you know, three to 500 bucks, probably depending on the home. But most of the folks that are going to participate are also probably going to attempt to receive either a federal credit, state credit. Sometimes they might get a credit from a utility company. The thing about all these programs is they kind of are here today and gone tomorrow. So by having a stable program that, you know, a builder can rely on and will know is there is, I think would also encourage more folks to do it, because they may not know if the OG&E credit or the utility credit, if you will, would be there in future cycles. But if ours is, you know, essentially static, that's just one more positive for them to be able to consider keeping it and then, you know, be willing to participate and build this above-code program for, for these homes. So that's certainly a real positive. If we did do a permanent adoption by ordinance, we would not want to approach the program with a set score, right? So right now, in all the past resolutions, we have set a score. We'll say the benchmark is a 57. So if we're going to adopt it as, as an ordinance, we would have to do it more so by reference. And so instead of, you must score a 57, our, we would want to say, to achieve compliance of the program, your home needs to be seven points better than whatever the minimum standard is by the, you know, as determined by the state, if you will, or the OUBCC. And again, we could make that number, you know, really whatever you want. Seven is the current benchmark that tends to be, five to seven tends to be the year-over-year change from code cycles to code cycles for the most part. Although, I'll be honest, once homes have hit around that 50 mark, code has been stalling out a little bit, because just normal building techniques are being challenged. You can only make windows so efficient. You can only insulate walls so well. You, you're, there's only so much benefit to getting, you know, adding more insulation to an attic. So that 50 score is kind of at a hinge point for the energy code folks to really see improvements in that score in future code cycles. It will probably require more and more renewables to actually lower that score. But the good news is, if we're piggybacking off the state's language, we have a set amount, be it five, seven, 10 points, whatever you all think is a good number, you know, we can always ensure that we're, you know, whatever we're rewarding will at least be better than our peers and everything going on in the state.
Greg, you had four people that could do it perfectly. So it is achievable at this particular benchmark.
Yeah, that 47, yes. So four of those homes in that, extrapolating, yes. Four of those homes would have hit a 47 or better.
Did the builder do something super special, whatever, to achieve that score, or was it normal kind of construction, but better?
I think it was most, probably a combination, you know? I mean, more like, more likely than not, a spray foam enveloped home would, would have been the, the bench, it would probably be the first bullet to try to push it over that limit. The way energy ratings work, there's actually a indirect relationship for a larger home actually has a smaller ratio of exterior wall to interior square footages.
Okay.
And so there's a weird relationship where someone building a slightly bigger home can actually achieve better scores than what somebody with the same scale down, just because of that, just because of that ratio. So combination of things, but more likely than not, there was some above-code consideration ergo of the spray foam.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
And having people getting total qualified for at least like the 50%.
Yeah. So in the, in the last batch, it was, what did I say there? It was 220 total applicants, and this is back, this is when we made the ERI score, the 57, 47 range. 220. Eighty-two of them, at this point, have achieved compliance, you know, 50% or better. And 19 of them withdrew. And then again, we still have 115 data points that are unresolved and out of that.
And saving average of $400 to $500 each one, probably, roughly?
Three to, three to 500 bucks, depending on, yeah, what, what the square footage of the home would.
Every, every little bit helps in a building home, so.
Well, and that's just it. Again, they're not getting completely enriched by the credit in the program. It is just an incentive. And again, I think this program works well in conjunction with other energy code programs, you know? And to, to really actually, if you were simply doing this for a fiscal gain, and this program was the only program out there, it would not be a profitable scenario, because to participate requires that builder to hire what we call an energy rating company. And they do an energy audit on the home before the home's even built. They take the floor plans, they evaluate the floor plans, they essentially run it through a software package and determine an estimated score, just to make sure they're even close to the benchmark or even having a chance. Then they have to go execute it. There's at a minimum two site inspections by the third party, where they go in once, they view the rough end work before they put the sheet rock down, look at all the work before it's even done, and then they'd have to come back for a final inspection and do what they call duct blasting and an air blower door test. So those services, again, the, the cost of them can vary, but, you know, probably a mean would be around 2,000 bucks. And you might be able to find a very small operator who might be willing to do it for a little less than that. So again, this credit is only, we're not even paying for any upgrades we're having to make to even achieve success in the program. Just, just the energy raider would probably cost somebody a couple grand. That's why this program, working in conjunction with a federal state program, starts to even better incentivize it, because it creates a better platform, and, and that reward might actually offset, you know, the credits in a sense might actually offset the raider, and maybe it would, maybe it would offset the cost of the upgrades, but probably not. And so, yep, that's most of what I had. What other questions might you all have?
I'm fine with adopting it as an ordinance, if council's amenable.
With the seven-year?
Mm-hmm.
Seven-point, yeah. Everybody's not.
I mean.
That was a good salesman.
There you go.
[laughing]
That landed Hall Park, if anybody wants some.
Not today. Well.
Okay. Well, I mean, yeah, we're, we're pretty excited about it. We, it's been a good program for us. You know, we're built for it now. We're pretty good at the, the data reporting. Our new software build makes accommodations for it as well. So, you know, when, when they're applying for permits, it's simply a click of a button. You're building a single-family home. Do you want to participate in an above-code program? Yes or no? They pick the program that's smart enough to deduct a fee on that front. So it's, it's pretty well-vetted and built and sustainable. So, you know, we're excited about it, and, you know, not that I don't like hanging out with you guys, but not having to come back here every two years isn't the worst thing in my life.
And there are builders who are marketing the fact that they're HERS-rated. Yeah, there's some great marketing that comes out of it.
No, yeah, there, there is definitely, definitely an advantage to them, yeah. And then the folks participating and are achieving it over and over, that's probably, it is probably more for that, again, you know, to be able to say to their clientele, this is what you're getting. Not that everybody knows what a HERS rating is, but, you know, being able to go back to them and say, yeah, well, not only did it meet, but it passed. You know, even Norman, even Norman recognized this is how much it was built, like above code. So I mean, things of that.
Oh, you mean on a city project?
Yeah, this is a city.
I, I've gotten rebates from OG&E on every building on this campus. Well, I will, I don't have it all in yet, but we're qualified for all of them. And even back years ago, when we first, when we remodeled the old library, and when the library was still in there, and we did all, we did all the lighting and more energy efficient, I've got rebates on all of that. So we've participated in their program for years on any of our construction, especially when we're updating stuff. So, I mean, it's pretty lucrative from time to time.
And it seems like the newer equipment always comes out with a higher CER rating for efficiency on mechanical systems. And so it's, it's, it's more expensive, but it's easier and easier to find the, the more efficient systems.
Sure, in the long run.
I think it'll be good. I mean, it'll, again, it's, I believe it's been a successful program for the city and the builders at a large. It's always an interesting spot when you can get energy code advocates, the building community and, and the council all kind of pushing in the same direction. So it's, it's been a real positive that, I think, for everybody in, in that, that standpoint, that we all, all of a mind that this is, you know, citizens of Norman should, you know, want an energy-efficient home, and, you know, let's give them an above-code home. So that's even better.
Buy a Mercedes instead of a Ford.
There you go.
All right. Anything else from council? Well, we are adjourned. Thank you, sir.
There you go. There you go.
Here we go. Good evening and welcome to the City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting of May 14th, 2024. Madam Clerk, will you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Ball?
Present.
Councilmember Schuler?
Here.
Councilmember Montoya?
Present.
Councilmember Grant?
Here.
Councilmember Nash?
Here.
Councilmember Foreman?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Mayor Heikala?
I am here. Thank you, ma'am. Would you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
...of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number one. A proclamation proclaiming the week of May 19th through 25th, 2024, is Public Works Week in the City of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
Second.
I have a motion. And second, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. "A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the week of May 19th through 25th, 2024, is Public Works Week in the city of Norman. Whereas public works professionals focus on facilities and services that are of vital importance and to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Norman, Oklahoma. And, whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures, and facilities essential for our citizens. And, whereas it is in the public interest for the cities and children in the city of Norman to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest in understanding of the importance of public works and the public works programs in their respective communities. And, whereas the city of Norman Public Works Department will celebrate by recognizing employees for their outstanding support of the goals of public works on May 23rd, educating local schoolchildren on the aspects of public works operations on May 20th, engaging in the community with public works art contest. And, whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association slash Canadian Public Works Association, be it now, therefore I, Mayor of the city of Norman of Oklahoma, do hereby designate the week of May 19th through 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions that they make to protecting our nation's health, safety, and quality of life." I would like to recognize Mr. Scott Skirts to come receive that. Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor and council, on behalf of Public Works, Utilities, and our Parks Department, we appreciate this proclamation. In addition to the work we do every day maintaining infrastructure throughout Norman, maintaining a fleet, and also maintaining a transit system, we're also professionals who are out there before, during, and after natural disasters occur throughout Norman, making sure that we take care of our citizens and kind of consider ourselves first responders in that aspect. Throughout the next week, we're going to be doing a lot of items that were mentioned there by the mayor. We're going to be having our first rodeo, where we're going to be equipment rodeo, where some of our operators are going to show their good skills with some of the equipment. It's going to be kind of fun. It's always a fun item to watch. We're also going to be doing a touch a truck event at Adams Elementary, which is a good chance to try to interact with those younger children. We're going to be having a coloring contest, and then we're going to be finishing it off with a banquet in Public Works, where we're going to just kind of spend some time together and just kind of thanking all those employees that make it all happen every day. So on behalf of everyone, thank you, and we appreciate this on behalf of all in Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two. A proclamation proclaiming Saturday, May 18th, 2024, is Kids to Park Day in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
Second.
I have a motion. And second, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. "A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Saturday, May 18th, 2024, is Kids to Park Day in the city of Norman." city of Norman, whereas May 18th, 2024, is the Kids to Park Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May, and whereas Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit the city of Norman's parks, public lands and waters, and whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, hyper, hyperchlo- chlorestoma, hypcholesterol, and whereas Kids Days, Kids to Parks Days will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors, and whereas Kids to Park Day will recognize the importance of recreating responsibly while enjoying the benefits of the outdoors, and whereas the city of Norman invites the public to celebrate Kids to Parks Days with a special event on Saturday, May 18th, 2024, at 12 o'clock PM at Prairie Creek Park. Now therefore I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim that Saturday, May 18th, 2024, as Kids to Park Day in the city of Norman. Jason Olson, he's right here.
Two, if we, if I can get Ella Reese and Jacob, they're actually the cuter part of, you'd rather listen than talk, let's put it that way, but they're, they're out here to tell everybody what they love about Norman parks. And of course, take a picture with the mayor.
Uh, I appreciate the park because it's always a good place to meet people and make connections, and it's always fun to make memories, and at the end of the day, it doesn't matter who you are, how much money you have, you can always just go there to have fun.
I like the park because of the swings and slides.
I like the park because it's a great place for opportunities and learning. As like, for me and Reese, we're both skateboarders. You got the, we got the new Blake Baldwin Skate Park that came like about four years ago now. It's coming on, it's been here. Uh, it, I've been skating there since it was open because I, I've lived here my whole life, and so like, it's brought so many opportunities for me as skateboarding, for to make skateboarding a career for me, because it's someplace that I can go and practice every day, and I'm there every day. And I just, I like that. It's amazing that I have that opportunity.
Thank you. You, you get to, who, who gets to keep it?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys. Item number three, a proclamation proclaiming the month of May, 2024, is Bike Month, and Friday, May 17th, 2024, is Bike to Work Day in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation?
So moved.
I have a motion and second, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of May, 2024, is Bike Month, and Friday, May 17th, 2024, is Bike to Work Day in the city of Norman, whereas today millions of Americans engage in bicycling because it is a viable and environmentally friendly form of transportation, an excellent form of fitness, and provides quality recreation, and helps relieve the physical, the fiscal strain of high gas prices, and whereas the education of cyclists, motorists, as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users, and whereas the city of Norman continues to update its bicycle plan and bicycle transportation network, including several planned bicycle facilities, such as the inclusion of a safe bike transportation accommodations on the road widening project on 36th Avenue Northwest, and the continued design and construction of multimodal off-street bike paths along State Highway 9, along Flood Avenue, from Robinson Street to Tecumseh Road, and along Constitution Street from Jenkins Avenue to Claussen Boulevard, and whereas the city of Norman has been designated by the League of American Bicycle, Bicyclists, as an official bicycle-friendly community for over 10 years, and whereas the Norman Bicycle Advisory Committee, the Bicycle League of Norman, and independent cyclists throughout our state are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities for all. Now therefore I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2024, as Bike Month, and also proclaim Friday, May 17th, 2024, as Bike to Work Day in the city of Norman, and encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of bicycle safety and be more aware of cyclists on our streets and highways, and invite all to ride their bicycles to Andrews Park that morning as they bike to work for an 8:30 AM rally as a show of support for bicycle use for all those reasons named herein. Is Mr. Hal Kentwell here today?
Mostly, I'd just like to thank the mayor and the council for this proclamation. Cycling in Norman has a long history of both being bicycle-friendly and active, and the proclamation, as the wording read, supports that completely, and we're deeply into the next 20 years on that. So thank you again, and definitely 8:30 or 8 o'clock, we're meeting around a few places in Norman, and then we'll ride down to Andrews Park as well, but come down to Andrews Park. Anybody would be welcome.
Thank you. Item number four, a proclamation proclaiming the month of May, 2024, is Oklahoma Water Safety Month in the city of Norman. I need a, a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation?
Second.
I have a motion and second, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming May, 2024, is Oklahoma Water Safety Month in the city of Norman, whereas citizens of Oklahoma recognize the role swimming and aqua- activities play for good physical and mental health, and their potential to enhance the quality of life for all people, and whereas citizens of Oklahoma understand the essential role that education regarding the topic of water safety plays in preventing drownings and recreational water-related injuries, and whereas the citizens of Oklahoma are aware of the necessity to developing safe swimming facilities, aquatic programs, home pools and spas, and related activities to provide healthy places to recreate, learn to, learn and grow, build self-esteem and confidence, which contribute to the quality of life in our community, and whereas the citizens of Oklahoma recognize the ongoing efforts and commitments to educate the public on pool and spa safety, whereas the citizens of Oklahoma understand the vital importance of communicating water safety rules and programs to families and individuals of all ages, whether owners of private pools, users of public swimming facilities, or visitors to water parks. Now therefore I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim May, 2024, is Oklahoma Water Safety Month in the city of Norman. I'd like to recognize Jason Olson to accept the proclamation.
Sure. So I'd like to thank Erica Rainey, our, um, YFAC Aquatics Coordinator, and Ava Watkins, lifeguard at both YFAC and Westwood, for accepting this proclamation with us. So, uh, mayor and council members, there are over 4,000 fatal drownings in the United States each and every year, 8,000 non-fatal drownings. We are doing our best to, here in Norman, to make sure no matter your income, ethnicity, or where you live in Norman, to make sure that you have a, a chance to take a water safety class to make our children and families safety, safer around water. Uh, we also offer scholarships for our swim lessons, uh, to make sure that they're affordable for anybody in Norman, and we have those at both the Young Family Athletic Center and, of course, our biggest swim lesson programs out at, at Westwood. Also, right after we own it, and I'm not, I didn't write down the date, but we do, um, have a program that we call the world's largest, uh, swim lesson, which is in conjunction with parks and recreation, aquatic facilities all over the United States, where we invite kids to, to a water safety class. So on behalf of you, thank you very much, uh, and thank you for recognizing this important thing for our children and families in, in our community.
Thank you, sir. Item number five, a proclamation proclaiming the week of May 19th through 25th, 2024, is National Travel and Tourism Week in the city of Norman. I would like to, excuse me, I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the week of May 19th through 25th, 2024, is National Travel and Tourism Week in the city of Norman, whereas the travel industry fuels every industry and will continue to be an essential part of the city of Norman's economy, development and workforce, and whereas travel is an economic powerhouse for every state and destination across the country, with an economic output of $2.8 trillion, supporting 15 million American jobs, and whereas travel spending supports vibrant and safe communities in the city of Norman and across the United States by generating, uh, $89 billion in state and local tax revenue in 2023, and to support essential services such as education, emergency response, public safety, and more, and whereas travel enables success for all industries, including manufacturing, agriculture, defense, healthcare, and more, by driving sales growth, innovation, education, and operations that move our economy, our nation, and the city of Norman forward, and whereas travel and tourism produces $164 million in travel spending, uh, 6, 6.2 million dollars in local tax revenue from tourism, and 2,800 tourism employees in Norman, and is the third-largest industry in the state of Oklahoma, and whereas the travel industry cannot recover without the full return of leisure, business, and international inbound travelers, uh, increasing travel too and within the United States drives America forward to a more prosperous future, and whereas the travel industry's success will grow, uh, the city of Norman's economy and workforce, since prior to the pandemic, small businesses accounted for 60% of leisure and hospitality employment. Whereas travel is an essential industry, and we must continue to communicate that growing travel leads to economic growth, benefits in businesses, and fosters mutual understanding. Now therefore I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the week of May 9th through 25th, 2024, as National Travel and Tourism Week in the city of Norman, and urge the citizens of the city of Norman to join city council in recognizing this critical role this industry pays, plays in Oklahoma, and in Norman. Is Mr. Dan Shim here to accept the word?
Thank you, mayor and council, for the proclamation. Uh, every year we do this, and I get to come up and say that, uh, it is my pleasure, honor, joy to wake up every day and sell Norman, market Norman to visitors. It is the best state in the country. Uh, but this has been a, a more exciting time than ever, as we've got to open up all the Norman Forward athletic facilities, as OU moves to the Southeastern Conference. Uh, it, it has just been a, a great time for Norman, as we've seen the impact of travel, and my favorite part of it, getting that OPM, other people's money, coming to the community. So travel tourism is the welcome mat to a community. It spurs, uh, growth in businesses, and it spurs growth in population. You won't want to start a business or move to a location if you've not been there and really loved it. So, um, we get to play a small part in that. We love it. Thank you for this proclamation, and we look forward to continuing to market Norman every day. I would like to invite everybody to sign up for the annual tourism luncheon next week, Wednesday, May 23rd, from 11:30 to 1. There's a link on the Visit Norman website. A sneak peek of that, we will be announcing that Norman is, will be a film-friendly certified community, and filmmaker Randy Turo will, will be talking about the business he's starting here, the films that he'll be bringing to Norman, and how that plays a vital role in the economic impact of Norman. So I'm excited to have you all there and, uh, listen to Randy. So, thank you.
Thank you. Now it's time for you guys to speak. Next item on the agenda is council announcements, and I'll start with Ward One.
Um, just a few real quick. Uh, tomorrow, from 5:00 to 6:00 PM at every middle school, um, they'll be having a ribbon cutting for their solar initiative kick project. Uh, they're getting their first solar, um, unit there, and it goes with their outdoor classroom. Um, they've got a huge garden out there, so if you're into that, come by and check it out. Um, on the 16th, we'll be having Norman Police Department's awards luncheon from 11:30 to 1:00 at the Railhouse, so come down there and celebrate and, you know, support our fine police officers. Uh, on the 17th, uh, the Norman Law Enforcement Memorial, Memorial will be going on at a Legacy Park Amphitheater, and that's going to be at 10:00 AM, so definitely come out there and show your love and support for our officers again. Um, on the 18th, uh, we'll be having a park cleanup at the Creekside Bike Park. Uh, that's over off 24th and Lindsay. Um, it kind of goes with a few of our proclamations, so if you ride your work bike to work on Friday, come by on Saturday and have some fun on it out there. Um, it's also Bring a Kid to Parks Day, so that's kind of perfect. Um, and inside a ward about a month ago, we had a house that caught on fire on Boyd Street. Um, it was caused by a squatter. Uh, I've been visiting a lot of the retail stores throughout the ward, um, Dollar General, some of the gas stations. They've all told me that they've had an increase in retail theft. Uh, I've been getting more reports of cars getting broken into, trespassing, and it's comes with the weather. There's more people out, more people looking to cause trouble. So, uh, the most important thing you can do is if you see something, say something. Remain vigilant, you know, lock your vehicles up, but, um, make a report. Call our police department and let them know what you see. Uh, the more reports that they get, they base their patrol schedules off that. So the more calls they get for an area, the more officers will have, lower response times, and, you know, that's for our safety. So look after your neighbor, just look after yourself. And the very last thing, uh, youth baseball here in Norman. I know it's got kind of chaotic, if you follow it the past week or so, um, so, but I'll be meeting with, uh, Mr. Olson. I'll also be meeting with a few of the parents from some of the league, so, but if you have any comments, any concerns about youth baseball, would like to see it, more funding, uh, more practice areas, things like that. Uh, get ahold of me, get ahold of Mr. Olson, and like I said, we're going to see what we can do about that, but that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember?
I have no announcements this week. I'm going to save all my time for a later meeting whenever we're, Councilmember Foreman and I are gonzo.
Councilmember?
Um, well, good evening, Ward Three in Norman, Oklahoma. Uh, the only thing I really have to say is just that- The only thing I really have to say is just a thank you to the Norman Chamber for organizing and planning the DC fly-in. We had an opportunity to talk to our delegation, and so it is my hope that whenever Congressman Cole, Tom Cole's office, reviews the community planning, funding requests, that they'll remember me saying that 86% of the collisions at Franklin and 36th Avenue could have been prevented. So, that's all I have. Thank you all for being here.
Councilmember?
Yes. Good evening, Ward Four and City of Norman. I hope everyone who went to Norman Music Fest, Norman Pride, Second Friday Art Walk, graduations, and Mother's Day activities have enjoyed themselves these past couple weeks with their family, friends, and community. May is Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander History Month. Members of my family, including myself, have Chamorro in their lineage, which means they're from the U.S. Territory known as Guam. There are a spectrum of people represented this month, to include Southeast Asians, of which we have experienced a bump in that population right here in Norman. It is worth noting that Oklahoma has received one of the largest groups of Afghan refugees in the United States since the fall of Kabul in 2021, with 72,000 refugees resettled in our state. Afghanistan is considered a Desi-country, which is a region of origin for people in the Asian Pacific Islander Desi-American category. The API DA category includes people from Asia, India, and the Pacific Islands of Micronesia, Melanesia, and Polynesia. That said, Norman visitors and residents have the ability to attend interconnections, continuing traditions in AAPI art, which will be held Sunday, May 19th, 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at The Well. Their ad copy says, "Deepen your connection with your community and expand your mindset of the traditional and cultural artistry and craft of Asian American and Pacific Islanders. Learn with others in a festival-like atmosphere about the rich artistic traditions of Asia and the Pacific Islands through creative workshops, food, cultural booths, and a panel of local visual performing and musical artists. This event will also feature interactive crafts and light refreshments. Additional food will be available for purchase from local food trucks. You can visit their events calendar to register, and this program is made possible through funding from the Friends of the Norman Library, Norman Arts Council, and the Pioneer Library System Foundation." May is also Mental Health Awareness Month, and has been since 1949. One in five people experience a mental health condition. Its purpose is to raise awareness of mental and behavioral health issues and to reduce stigma. It also helps people understand how mental illnesses affect their lives and educates them about available services. Throughout the month, 988 will launch 31 days of events and content to help Oklahomans learn about their mental health and the resources available for them and their loved ones. On this website, you will find tips for self-care, events, a social toolkit, and more. You can visit HTTPS/4/988Oklahoma.com/MentalHealth-Health-Awareness-Month. On Saturday, May 18th, there will be a combined ward meeting for Wards Four and Seven at the Adult Wellness Education Center located at 602 North Finley, from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. to talk accessory dwelling units and what that means for the future of Norman moving forward, as we pass that in April, and it is citywide. I'd also like to acknowledge and thank Ward Four resident Trey Carson for his continued service on the Pioneer Library System Board of Trustees, as he is being reappointed in tonight's consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember next?
No, no, it's Mr. Sweet.
Councilmember?
Okay, the other directors in here, Jane, Chris, Anthony, y'all didn't get proclamations, but I recognize you and I appreciate you. Mr. Olson took two, and I just think that's very greedy. So, there's that part, and then another thing that's really been weighing on me for the last week, I was not at the study session last week. My daughter attends Sooner Theater, and normally every week when she's in class, two hours a week, I walk around all over Ward Four. I get my steps in, it's really great, especially since the weather's getting better. And last week, they had tech rehearsal for an hour and a half, so I walked around, and there was still some time to kill, so I sat down on one of the brick walls across the street from Sooner Theater. And in all this time that I've done my walking, I've never been approached by an unhoused person, I've never seen one. I guess I just go at a different time than most people, the stories that we hear. But I was approached last week, and I would never have assumed he was unhoused. He cleaned clothes, didn't smell, he had a backpack, I could see a MacBook in it, a lot of books, and he just started talking to me. And as the conversation went on, I could tell something was off with him, and really sort of off with him, and I asked him where he lived in Norman, and he lived in his car. So, I, you know, pointed behind me, well, we have this shelter, you know, do you know about food and shelter, trying to point out some of our resources here with the city, and he wasn't that interested. He was super convinced that he was going to be able to figure it out himself, and then proceeded to tell me that, you know, he struggled with employment after 2018. Before that, he showed me his student IDs, different awards that he had won, he had all these things. I believe he was very educated. He has a master's, he used to write all these grants, worked at the Health Science Center, had all his employee IDs, showed me everything. But then in 2018, from a previous surgery, he believed that they put wires in him and they turned them on. So, at some point, this man had a psychological break, and just by looking at him, you would not know that. And ended the conversation, because I had to go get my child, and I just, I couldn't get over it, and I knew that OU PD arrested him, so I reached out to the chief and asked who he was and learned his name, and it's just something in this position the last four years that we get talked to a lot about is the unhoused situation in Norman. And a lot of people like to think they're lazy, or they're drug addicts, and there's a one-stop solution, or we shouldn't have anything to do with it. But for this young man, I believe him. I believe he was highly educated and successful in his own right until something in his body went off. And I don't know if medication could help him, I don't know if he could be rehabbed back into society and able to work and function, but it is a very multifaceted situation and predicament, and it's very difficult to be in this seat because we don't, you know, want to see, you know, trash everywhere, right? Like, that's the first thing people think about, but there's humanity with these people, and I'm sad that on June 25th, is my last meeting, like Councilmember Schuler alluded to, on July 2nd, our council carriage turns back into a pumpkin. And so, we won't be a part of the solution, but I hope moving forward, the next council and the next person in the seat, Councilmember-elect Hinkle, will have a very compassionate and broad approach to dealing with a very real issue that's facing us. So, it's not just choosing to be unhoused or lazy, it's mental health, it's a whole lot of things, and so, I don't know, it's just something that's really been weighing on me and in my position, and I'm sad that I won't be here to finish the work, but I hope and pray that our council can. So, that's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember?
Thank you. Also want to echo the comments of Councilmember Grant about the Ward Meeting, Ward Four and Seven joint meeting this Saturday at the Wellness Center to specifically discuss ADUs. They, even though the policy allows it citywide, we do think that Wards Four, Two, and Seven, and probably maybe parts of Ward One as well, might see more of them than other parts of the city where HOAs exist and may not allow them. So, if anybody is interested in ADUs, accessory dwelling units, if you're interested in building a small apartment in your backyard for your teenager, or your college kid, or your elderly parent, or whatever it may be, so that they can be on the same property and you can look after them, that's what we're trying to encourage. And so, if you're interested in that and want to know some more information about it, please feel free to attend on Saturday at 2:00 at the Wellness Center. And then, also, this weekend is the May Fair on Campus Corner, so definitely encourage everybody, if you're looking for something to do this weekend that's fun, go out and check that out on Campus Corner. And then also wanted to mention Community Planning and Transportation Committee last Thursday. We meet the fourth Thursday of every month at 4:00 p.m. here at City Hall, and we get a update and have a discussion with city staff about public transit ridership, our projects that are ongoing with public transit, future plans. We take any feedback, we ask questions, and have a general discussion about that. We also get updates from city staff on road construction projects, sidewalk projects, pretty much everything infrastructure-related that you could think of, we talk about in that committee. If you're unable to attend, it is livestreamed on the City of Norman YouTube channel. You can go back on that channel and re-watch any of the city meetings anytime you want, and I would definitely encourage you to do that if that subject is of interest to you. Last month, we talked about traffic collisions in Norman, and where in Norman are the areas that see the most traffic collisions, and where do fatalities most often happen in Norman? And a lot of them do happen on Highway Nine, as we all know, but most of the signalized intersections in Norman, think of Maine and 24th, 24th and Robinson, 12th and Alameda, 12th and Lindsay, 12th and Robinson, 36th and Maine, those really big intersections that are signalized. Based on the data we have from city staff, those are where the most accidents in Norman happen, and I hate to even call them accidents, they're just nationwide, signalized intersections, people turning left, that is where the most people are killed every year in traffic collisions, turning left at a big signalized intersection like that. So, one of the things that cities are doing to try to address that is to change where we put traffic signals, or if we put them in at all. And in Norman, one of the biggest complaints I've always heard from everybody all my life growing up here, is that Norman has so many traffic lights, and it takes so long to get across town because of them. I know the routes to take to avoid them, but one of the benefits of growing up here and learning how to drive here. But, traffic signals are the number-one cause of traffic congestion as well. So, they're not only where the most traffic crashes happen, they're the number-one cause of traffic congestion. So, I've had, heard a lot of people, I think we all have, talking about the new roundabout on North Flood, just north of Robinson, and why it's being done. And the reason is, is that it's, one, too close to the intersection at Robinson and Flood to put another traffic light. You would have two traffic signals very close together, and I want you to think of West Robinson in front of 7-Eleven and the movie theaters, how those two traffic signals, how close they used to be to each other, and how much of a problem that was. Also, if you've ever driven on 19th Street and Moore, and you've noticed how bad the traffic is there, it's because they have a string of traffic lights that are right next to each other when you get off the highway. Really creates a situation, and so, the roundabout, they are proven to not only reduce fatality accidents by over 90% compared to a signalized intersection, which is astonishing to me. That right there is the selling point alone. But additionally, they allow traffic to continually flow. I don't know about you, but one of the most annoying things for me, driving, is being stuck at a red light, sometimes when there's no traffic coming from either direction and you're just waiting for it to change. So, continuous flow of traffic, it saves on emissions, it saves on fuel, saves on time, and when there's a blackout, the traffic lights won't work, but a roundabout will continue to function just the way it is. They are also, they are more expensive to put in than a traffic signal, but over the lifespan, they are cheaper because they are cheaper to maintain and operate where a traffic signal has to be maintained forever, the lights have to be changed, they require electricity to operate, and they're not cheap to put in either. So, I would just encourage Norman residents to please be willing to accept a change that will probably make your commute a little bit better if you just give it a chance, and will hopefully help make our streets safer too. We had, 15 people were killed in Norman last year in traffic crashes, 15, and as I've mentioned before, we had two homicides last year. So, exponentially more people in Norman are killed every year in car crashes than are due to homicide. So, this is something we can do something about. We're going to be having another roundabout coming in on South Jenkins, right in front of the new softball stadium, where Constitution and Jenkins meet each other, so get ready for that one too. But I would, again, just encourage everybody, if you're not familiar with them, please read up on them, look at some other places that are putting them in, and how they've impacted those communities in a positive way. And so, just, I wanted to bring that because I saw a lot of talk about it this weekend on the Norman Community page, and so. And then lastly, wanted to mention, I just wanted to recognize someone, a Ward Seven resident would now be Ward One. When the Ward boundaries changed last year, this neighborhood went from Ward Seven to Ward One. But I wanted to mention Ms. Roberta Pales. She passed away the week before last, and she served on the Planning Commission here in Norman for several years. When I got on council, she was a planning commissioner, and continued serving for several years. Was known to volunteer for a wide range of things in Norman during the time I knew her, and even recently, a few months ago, inquired with me about the AIM Committee, and we'd already set that and done it, but she was interested in serving all the way to the end. So, when her neighborhood was in Ward Seven, it was a door that I enjoyed knocking on every time and having a discussion with her about what was going on. So, I just want to thank her and her family and everything that she did for Norman over the years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember?
No announcements, other than the second, all of Councilmembers Holman's comments on roundabouts.
Thank you for that, and I have no. Next item on the agenda is Consent Docket. This item has been placed on the agenda so that the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items so that they wish to be approved or acknowledged in by one motion. If any of them proposed does not meet with the approval of all council members, then that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that Items Six through Twenty Seven be placed on the Consent Docket. I need a motion to place Items Six through Twenty Six on the Consent Docket.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to place Items Six through Twenty Seven on the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Cast, and the motion to place Items Six through Twenty Seven on the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Docket.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the Consent Docket? The motion on the floor is to approve the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 28. A public hearing for the proposed fifth-year action plan for the 49th year Norman Community Development Block Grant application, which includes the 2024 Home Program totaling $1,424 to be submitted to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. I need a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open.
Second.
Have a motion and second. The motion on floor is to open the public hearing. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to open the public hearing passes unanimously. You're now in the public hearing.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to recognize Ms. Lisa Craig, to come, Grants Planner, to come make a presentation.
All right. Mayor and Council, Lisa Craig, CDBG Grants Manager. As the mayor said, this is our fifth year of our action plan. It is based upon a consolidated plan. This is, you know, 50 years of this program, HUD has kind of figured it out. And so, now they have, used to, we came, and every year was a whole new ballgame, and they're really, it was difficult to have any kind of continuity, and then about 1995, HUD said, okay, we want communities to kind of take a step back and look at what they think that they could accomplish in five years, and to set some goals and objectives. So, here we are, we're getting ready to go into our fifth year on July 1st for the plan that you guys adopted back in 2020. Who knew what was going to happen in this five years? So, we not only had four years of CDBG funding, but we had a substantial amount of COVID funding that I'll go into here in a minute. But, the consolidated plan and the following action plans are developed by a policy committee. It's a 15-member, sometimes 18-member citizens group. It's a 15-member, sometimes 18-member citizens group. And we meet for about six months out of the year, once a month, and have discussions about what is the potential with this program, and what are the potential benefits for the City of Norman, and how we can take these funds and leverage other things with these funds. And, so, when we did the plan back in 2020, our goals were to maintain an adequate supply of permanent quality affordable housing, address special needs populations, reduce homelessness, and then continue commercial and residential revitalization efforts in low-income neighborhoods. I myself feel that we have checked all those boxes, and we'll be able to expand on those in the upcoming year. And what is special about the fifth year of the consolidated plan is you kind of get double duty. So we will be working as a staff and as a committee over the next year to write our next five-year plan. And so while we're finishing up one year, we'll be working on the next five years and then planning for that first year for the next year. I kind of went over all of this, I got ahead of myself. So, again, it's a five-year plan, one-year incremental action plans. Currently, we have received our allocations from HUD, CDBG $944,550, little bit of an increase from last year, home 390-065 a substantial decrease. These are funds that are appropriated by Congress. And once the T-HUD bill has worked its way through all the mechanisms, and there is a funding level for both the CDBG program and the home program, it is a formula allocation that goes to each of the communities. We can lobby all we want, it's a formula allocation. You know, the push that we always put forth with resolutions by the council, as well as interacting with the congressional delegation and working with the National Community Development Association, is to just put a higher level of funding for the HUD programs in general. So, I mentioned the CARES Act funds. We received two appropriations, well, three appropriations actually, two CDBG and one home. The HUD CDBG CV was $1.2 million. We have, oh, $50,000-some-odd thousand left. We have, we did a substantial amount of rental assistance and some startup assistance for homelessness. The other funding was from the same appropriation, but it flowed through the state instead of directly to us from HUD. We have expended all of those funds. We're wrapping up our monitoring and starting our closeout process for that. Our home ARP is what we're really just now getting started on. That's going to be permanent supportive housing for chronically homeless individuals. Council approved our plan back in March, and HUD then signed off on it. We have till 2030 to actually expend the funds. We are currently in negotiations with a property owner to purchase a piece of property for this facility to go on. Ironically, today, the Department of Commerce released their application for their part of the money, which we would qualify for also. That's not due till August, and so we'll get started working on that so that we can possibly leverage the funding and the process we've already gone through for this project to get a little bit more money, to make it more financially feasible. So as I said, we have a citizens committee that we follow, a citizen participation process that we evaluate constantly, is approved by council as part of our consolidated plan, and then approved by HUD. We started off the year with a public hearing to determine, as we begin our programming, we want to hear from the citizens of the needs of the low and moderate income citizens that live in Norman. We had a really robust conversation, ranging from everything from housing to rental housing to transportation to prescriptions. We take all of that into consideration. Most of these things we cannot address with this program, but we work to work with other entities that could possibly lessen some of the burdens on the citizens. We had multiple policy committee meetings, we had neighborhood meetings every month that has now come together with this proposal coming to you guys in another public hearing to consider our application to HUD. So, we just received new income limits. Everybody always says, you know, what is 80% of median family income? So last week, these changed. $50,150 is the 80% median income for one person. For four people, it's 71.6. They sound like big numbers, but when you really take into account the cost of living these days with inflationary increases that are going on, the cost of housing, they're not that big numbers. The annual action plan, what we do is we take into consideration everything that the policy committee does, sets the parameters for the budget, we give HUD our objectives for the next year, how we're going to comply with the citizen participation plan, the accomplishments we hope for each activity, how we're going to distribute the funds, and then there's a whole stack of papers that the mayor gets to sign for the certifications. So, considering the $944,550, we are budgeting $180,540 for administration and planning, which is below our 20% cap, $456,000 for housing rehabilitation, $142,000 for Neighborhood Initiatives program, and $140,000 for affordable housing acquisition. Some of these programs, because I mentioned that the COVID funds that came, CDBG funds are, and home funds, one of the great points about those is it's not a use-it-or-lose-it. There's a formula as to how much you can have on hand each year that we, we're below that threshold. And while we had that influx of almost $3 million worth of COVID money, we kind of backburnered some of the CDBG money. So this year, you'll see us really dipping into those reserves and putting the, a lot of programs out on the street that we've kind of been holding off on. Most of our work is done within a target area, a Neighborhood Initiatives program in our small neighborhood projects. This shows the map. It's primarily the core area. The ins and outs are based upon census tracts and block groups so that we can analyze the demographic information and to qualify the neighborhoods. And in these, these areas here, they are 73% low and moderate income households. To qualify as a target area, there's a lot of math here. 51% of the households in a census tract have to be 80%, I mean, 51% of the households have to be 80% or below median income. And so, it's, yeah. And so, we're at 73, we're good. Housing rehab program, we have about $50,000 of prior year funding available. We do the owner occupied exterior property maintenance program only within the target areas, primarily the strong neighborhoods initiative areas. We have an emergency repair program where we can go in and address a specific sewer issue, a roof leaking, or the heat and air system not working, as well as an accessibility modification program that we can do both renter and owner properties on that to meet the needs of the individual that is living in the homes that have some sort of a mobility impairment. All of these are done as a grant. The Neighborhood Initiatives, as I mentioned, is in three of our target area neighborhoods. We have about $250,000 of prior year funding available. We mirrored this program off the SNI program in Oklahoma City with their permission. They've been quite helpful. Shannon and her team up there have been great in helping us get this set up. We have been meeting monthly with the residents of these three neighborhoods. They're excited, they're excited to live in these neighborhoods. I am impressed, after doing this for almost 40 years, obviously, the population has turned over. But the people we are working with, it's really a multi-generational type of residents in these neighborhoods, but a lot of them are relatively young, and this is the neighborhood that they want to live in. This isn't just where they could afford. They intentionally chose these neighborhoods, they're excited about their neighborhoods, and they're excited about the improvements that are coming. Public services, we have been funding out of our COVID funds, position in partnership with the housing authority. Actually, he's a housing authority employee, and we pay the bill, that's the agreement we worked out on. He's been working with the landlords in town to increase participation of Section 8. He has really made a lot of progress with primarily large complexes that previously would not accept Section 8 for whatever reason, but by, you know, working with him, and they'll do one unit, and they say, this is really working out great, let's go ahead and add another unit. And so now, we have, we've added probably about 30 Section 8 units, and each month, it just keeps on adding. We'll be phasing out our CARES Act money for that and moving it into a CDBG program. The community development projects and acquisition, for years, we have funded Habitat and the Affordable Housing Corporation of Norman to allow them to acquire properties. Habitat usually has been doing one lot, sometimes two, if they can get them at a really good price. The Affordable Housing Corporation, that has been around for quite some time, and they now have an inventory of about 45 properties that return after insurance, maintenance issues. They return about $200,000 that simply just gets invested into more affordable housing each year. The home program, $390,000, this was the one that we received a $60,000-some-odd-thousand cut. Administration, 10% is the maximum. Chodo, which is a community housing development organization, which is a special kind of nonprofit, has to have a very specific board structure. We have Chodo, Norman Chodo is our Chodo. They partner with the Affordable Housing nonprofit to bring forward different affordable housing projects. We've recently constructed three homes just north of here, up in Old Silk Stocking. Currently, we are going to be leveraging some of our home funds with the home ARP funds for the small apartment complex of permanent supportive housing that we'll be developing. And then we're also going to be doing a small down payment assistance program for the three SNI neighborhoods. That is to encourage more investment into those neighborhoods to build up the percentage of owner-occupied housing. They are still relatively affordable in their housing stock, and so, we're excited. We did, we budgeted funds last year for this, too, just could not get it off the ground, so we'll have enough money to do 16 down payment assistance programs. Next steps, council approval of the action plan. Public comment runs till 5:00 tomorrow night, and once those comments have all been gathered up, we will package all this up and send it to HUD for a start date of July 1st. Any questions?
Questions from council? Councilmember?
Hi, Lisa. Can you go back to the slide where it talks about the household and then the income amount?
You bet.
The 50 slides ago, sorry.
Give me a second here.
I know you said the cost of living and inflation is a lot, but salaries haven't inflated. Can you just kind of talk about where these numbers came from?
HUD sets these each year, countrywide. And so, we are included within the Oklahoma City Metropolitan Statistical Area, so our numbers for Cleveland County are included with that whole Six County area. Comes out about the 1st of May each year. They usually inch up just a smidge, except for 2021, right after COVID really latched on, they actually went down. That's the only time I've ever seen them go down. They go up $300 or $400 a year, which really is inconsequential when you look at the cost increases of everything.
Okay, thank you.
Lisa, I was down at, sorry, down at Habitat this afternoon, and they said that they built three homes. Is that the three homes that you built, or is that three homes in addition to your?
That's three homes that they built. We just helped them acquire the property. They did two down on Twisted Oak, and one over, I think, on Iowa, I believe, with land that we helped them purchase.
And that doesn't count towards the three that you built yourself?
No, those were with the Affordable Housing Corporation and the Chodo.
See, that's absolutely tremendous.
Well, it's a drop in the bucket from what we need, but, you know, we just keep chipping away.
More is better than not. Any other, okay, Councilmember Wolf?
Just a quick question. According to our January 25 PTI count, we have 245 beds currently available. Does the Section 8, is that included in that number?
That, no, there are, you know, the housing authority, they manage about 1,700 vouchers.
Okay.
And so, this is just an additional 25 apartments that landlords have been willing to rent for someone with a Section 8.
And I know that was a challenge, trying to get people to participate in the Section 8, and we're having a lot more luck with that. So, do you have those numbers, roughly, like how many?
I can get those, I can get those.
I was just kind of curious how good we're doing. Are we still at a bit of a shortfall?
Yeah.
Okay. Always.
Yeah, he provides a report each month of the different contacts he's made and what people have agreed to. You know, when we, when we talked, oh, probably two years ago, there was, there was the issue that households that were receiving their voucher were having to turn them back in because they could not find a suitable unit. There just wasn't any available. Happy to report, talking with the housing authority, that's no longer the problem.
Good.
That people that are receiving their vouchers are able to find their unit within the allowed time and lease up and move in.
Okay, well, perfect. Thank you so much. Keep up the great work.
This is an opportunity for, excuse me if I learn to speak. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Remarks should be directed to city council only. Once the public comments have been concluded, council may choose to answer your questions. Madam Clerk, is there anybody registered to speak?
Yes, Mayor, we'll start with Cynthia Rogers.
Good evening. Cynthia Rogers, Ward 4, still and always. I just wanted to comment that I really appreciate this program, and I appreciate the thoughtfulness and what appears to be very judicious use of funds to address a need in our community. And this is what I would call community-building sorts of activities, so I appreciate staff and Lisa for all their work.
Thank you, ma'am.
Dan Munson, Ward 6, I'm here for the party. I mean, that was easy. Hey, so, thank you so much for what you do. Yeah. She makes this seem really, really easy. It's not a, it's not an easy subject at all, and she makes it seem really easy. You may have answered my questions already, but, so, HUD announced a week ago today that they're allocating $5.5 billion, and the impression that I got is that was additional funding above and beyond the annual amount. And so, the amount coming to the state of Oklahoma is $49 million. The District of Columbia, I believe, is set to receive $40 million. Our population in our state's about 4 million. This, a quick search, it looked like our median household income for the state was $63,000. Washington DC's population's about 700,000. Is it all formula-driven?
Dan, you have to address.
All right, so, all right, very good. So, can you guys ask her that? And, so, do we know about that $5.5 billion? And how will that impact the funding that we'll have for the City of Norman? And I'll just stop there. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Steve Ellis, Ward 4. One of the reasons I wanted to make sure to say something during this public comment is because that's one of the things that the feds asked us to do. So if we want to get our money and maybe get more money according to the formula, let's make sure that we have lots of public participation. So here's my two cents. It's, it's a, we do a really good job with the community block grant stuff. My biggest regret is that it's only roughly a million dollars coming next year. Did I see that right, 900-some-odd thousand? I want to encourage the city councilors to sort of look over the program pretty carefully, and in particular, the goals, because one of the things that and in particular, the goals, because one of the things that we can do as a city that I think will help supercharge the ability to spend that money is to keep in mind the goals of this program while we're doing our other stuff, right? So when we think about housing rehabilitation, hopefully that will remind us that we need to be, you know, working on the current areas of Norman that may be having some difficulties but that are already part of our service area, rather than getting our attention directed by shiny new things. I think it's important that we take care of what we have. The effort under Public Services to increase participation in the Section 8 program is very, very welcome, because that has definitely been a barrier to helping people get housed in Norman, and I'm glad to hear, I hope it continues to go forward, that more Section 8 vouchers are being employed. The Community Development Program, I think, is a fantastic model for us to think about some of our neighborhood-driven proposals, which is something that I know my council member has been talking about, and something that I think we really want to appreciate, this sort of community budgeting kind of project. But also, the affordable housing stuff is just so important, and when you look at the need versus sort of what we're able to invest in, it's really just not very much. And thinking about using Norman's resources to try to leverage more and more affordable housing makes good sense. I mean, the drive to just have more market value housing, I think, creates difficulties for affordable housing in Norman. So we should always be thinking about these four goals when you're just going about doing your regular job, and maybe even pitch in a little extra money on top of the million that we've got. So thanks a lot, Lisa, and let's keep these principles in mind going forward.
Thank you, sir.
Cheryl Ann Densow.
Cheryl Ann Densow, Wards Four and Six. I just had a question, mostly for Lisa. One of the slides said that a property is going to be acquired or is in the process of being acquired for unhoused folks, and I just want to know where the property is and what property is in the works, and it's kind of like glazed over there, so there's just a couple of details that I'd like to know.
Wait a second, Lisa, hold on.
Okay.
If you hold two questions in your mind.
Evan.
Hi, Evan, Dan, Ward Seven. My question for Lisa would be, in that rehabilitation funding allocation, would that encompass landscaping and a food forest as being a part of some rehabilitation of a property?
That's all? Are there any other questions from council? Councilmember Foreman.
Ms. Craig, can you answer those questions?
You betcha, you betcha. Now you can't.
I'll take them in the reverse order so I can remember. The housing rehabilitation program, we are limited in that if it is the program that is for the exterior property maintenance, we are working with code compliance on the issues that they have cited with the owner occupant. The emergency repair program, we are addressing a situation that is of an urgent need. The roof is leaking, the sewer line has collapsed. Unfortunately, because we have such limited funding, we do not address landscaping issues. So, the formula allocation, it's one of those yes and nos. Congress sets the budget for CDBG has two components. It has the formula allocation for the entitlement program, which we are, which is strictly a formula that takes into account all kinds of arcane things. Then there is a set-aside program, the EDI, the Economic Development Initiative Program, which Norman benefited from this year with the air, the, yeah, up there. That is through the congressional delegations that they can set aside special projects and make it through Congress for that.
Acquiring property?
The acquiring property. What we do is we have a contract with Habitat as well as with the Affordable Housing Corporation for those dollar amounts, and they are required to go find the property they want to purchase. We do an environmental review on it, as well as make sure that they are purchasing it below the appraised value, so.
When you do an environmental review, are you talking about a full review of the properties or just?
Well, it's the HUD environmental, it's not a NEPA, it's, but we make sure the property's not in a floodplain, it's not too close to the airport. If it's located in certain areas, they'll have to do noise attenuation measures, and it's, it takes about a day to do one and make sure that there's no historical implications, that it's not on the middle, you know, not on a toxic landfill or something like that, so. But it's not the same kind of environmental review that Public Works does for their roads, but it takes, you know, a couple days to work through the, they'll be on your desk next week.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Councilmember Holman.
Yes, another question. Just wanted to say, I think one of the slides showed 45 million, 48 million dollars since 1978.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So averaging a million plus a year.
Last forty-plus years, almost fifty, I think, just thinking about what we wouldn't have been able to do in Norman if we hadn't had that coming in during that time, and what we have been able to do. You know, as housing affordability is becoming a bigger and bigger issue, not just in Norman but nationwide, cities all over the country are struggling with this issue. It's one of the main drivers of homelessness is people not being able to afford to live anywhere. Oklahoma is still one of the cheapest places to rent in the country, as we always have been, but there is data, as I mentioned before, that shows that the average rent in Oklahoma City Metro, at least anyway, has been one of the fastest rising in the last four years. So it's still cheap compared to Dallas or wherever, but it's rising at a faster rate here, and wages in Oklahoma are not definitely keeping up with that. We're one of the lowest-income states in the country, high poverty rate, especially in rural areas, and as we've talked about before, one of the best, maybe the best way to reduce homelessness is to keep people from becoming homeless in the first place. And so if people have homes, they have income, or they have jobs, and they're just on the edge, you know, and barely able to keep what they have, you know, utilities are going up, all that type of stuff. We all know how things cost and inflation and all that stuff. I would mention inflation has been higher before in the seventies and eighties than it is today, double, I think, than it is today. But all that aside, we're living in right now, and it's a tough time for a lot of folks, and so I'm just, I'm really glad that we have this program. I'm thankful that you and the other staff is here working on it.
Thank you. One of the reasons that we have elected not only staff but the policy committee to focus on the housing rehabilitation program is, one of the few little nuances of the CDBG program and the home program both, is that by statute, we're allowed to use these funds on private property. And so there is no other entity that has funding available to actually go in with the amount of work that we can do citywide on private property to help people maintain, you know, residences in their homes, whether it is providing accessibility modifications because they have had a deterioration of their health and they can no longer get into the bathroom, or they need a ramp, or is it, you know, replacing the roof on a house that, you know, when I first started, a roof was three, $4,000. We did one two weeks ago, it was 14,000, and a heat and air unit is 15,000. I mean, it's, the cost increases are incredible. This is the first year that we will almost deplete all of our housing rehabilitation funds, not just because the projects are higher, but the demand that we have had. We usually average about fifty projects a year in housing rehab, and this year, we're going to be doing about seventy by the time July gets here, so staying busy.
Well, I appreciate all of that, Lisa, and I would definitely encourage us to make sure our state and federal representatives for Oklahoma are aware of this and are, you know, it'd be nice if we could get them to allocate more resources, of course. I'm very interested in the comment that was made by Mr. Munson about Oklahoma getting $49 million and Washington DC getting forty. When our state is, you know, five times larger than the District of Columbia, and I'm going to guess that the median income in Washington DC is quite, a bit higher than Oklahoma, so that's interesting to me that that would be the case, and I'd like to look into that more and see what other states are, what proportion they're getting compared to population and median income.
You know, in comparison, you know, we received roughly 950, 970,000. Oklahoma City receives about 3.8 million of CDBG funds, so it's, you know.
Yeah. Thank you, Lisa, appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Ball?
I just want to make sure Cheryl answers questions answered right, and this might be a question for Catherine. Do we actually have any parcels of land that we are actively pursuing right now that we can talk about in public as far as affordable housing?
I will tell you, there's not much out there. That we have one parcel that we are pursuing right now, and for a small apartment complex, but as far as trying to find infill lots and things like that, it's really tough. The Affordable Housing Corporation was able to purchase a lot a couple weeks ago using their funds, and it was just your basic, you know, 7,000-square-foot lot, and it was $60,000, and we felt really lucky to get it, so.
Okay, well, thank you. And I know that when we do purchase property, a lot of it's discussed in executive session, so I would encourage you to look at the agendas for the executive session, and you probably get an idea of which properties we're pursuing, so.
Your Honor, we do hope to make an announcement tomorrow regarding council's investment in the affordable housing project through ARPA funds, so stay tuned.
Fingers crossed, so.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to close the public hearing. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to close the public hearing passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I need a motion to approve submittal of the application to the U.S. Housing and Urban Development Office. Motion on the floor is to approve the submittal of the application of the U.S. Housing and Urban Development Office. You may cast your vote.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the submittal of the application passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Good job, Lisa. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address City Council. Due to open meeting act regulations, council is not in discussion, excuse me, during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up?
We'll start with Peter Gade.
Sir, would you hand those to the clerk, please, and then she'll hand them out? Thank you, sir. Copy of what I'm going to say, and thank you for confirming yesterday that I made the miscellaneous comments. Mayor Harkila and council members, I want to introduce myself. I'm Peter Gade. I've lived at 13817 Norris Circle since May 1999, 25 years this month. I want to thank you for the opportunity to comment about concerns of many of my neighbors in Ward Five, rural East Norman. There is a marijuana grow business, OKGALLC, at 13628 Crystal Brook Circle, which has requested the Oklahoma Water Resources Board to permit an excessive water use permit for up to five acre-feet per year, total of 1.6 million gallons. A hearing on whether to grant this permit is scheduled for this Thursday, May 16. Numerous neighbors have given public comments of protest to the OWRB requesting it deny the permit. As you know, residents in this part of Norman have private water wells. Simply put, as owners of our own water wells, we are concerned about the impact of excess water use on our wells, and more broadly, the Garber Wellington Aquifer, which provides a good share of the city's water. Among our water concerns are metering. The permit application nor does the OWRB require the well to be metered. Thus, there's no method of monitoring the actual water use. We're worried about accountability. How would the OKGA be held responsible for using no more than five acre-feet, or 1.6 million acres, of water per year? And what would be our residents' recourse? For example, what if the well, if and when the permit is granted, our water supply is affected due to the excessive OKGA water use? These concerns become more apparent when you consider that projections using cannabis industry trade journals on water required to support a grow the size of OKGA, 10,000 square feet, indicate that this business is likely to use up to 7.6 million gallons of water per year. Now, I have used industry trade journals, and on the back page, you can see projections and where the math comes to get that number. It's fully cited, the site. Sir, you ran out of time, but we do have your notes, and we can sure read them. But thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Cynthia Rogers.
Hello again. Still me. I'd like for you to take a journey with me back to 2019. And as you recall, in 2019, some big things were happening in the city. There was the UMP restated and amended project plan, and if you recall, there was a lot of pushback by citizens who successively collected a lot of signatures, and fortunately, that petition was struck down by the State Supreme Court, but there was a lot of concern about that plan, and many of us, including myself, thought it was a really bad deal. But anyway, that plan stopped. It was an agreement to stop collecting the increment from the University North Park District because the city government was broke, and the increment was about 10% of the general fund's revenues. We couldn't afford it anymore. So, you know, it had to be an agreement, so it had to be negotiated, and it reduced the authorized spending because the increment was stopped before it was intended to be. But the developers got something out of that. They got a lot. They got, they got out of repaying taxpayers for the costs, they're sure of the costs of Legacy Park. I think that was $8 million that they didn't have to pay back, and they didn't have to complete the Lifestyle Center that was promised. And also, part of that agreement, the city agreed to contribute at least $22.5 million for a recreational facility that would fulfill the initial intent of a cultural facility or regional draw. And so the city has more than held its bargain. We didn't get the clawback, and we put in a recreational facility, that's the YFAC, the Young Family Athletic Center. Now, did the city spend at least 22.5 million? Yes, we did. We spent, by my accounting, 29 million from Normwood Forward Funds and another 3.8 million in bonds from the hotel room tax. So altogether, that So altogether, that facility was $46.5 million, much more than we promised. Is that facility doing what it's intended to do? Generate lots of activity, lots of people coming and going, lots of activity at the restaurants in that area? Yes, it is, and I think Jason Olson has shared a lot of those information for us. So this is why when I got to look at the proposed UNP TIF number four and number five project plan, that I just got to see. Mary Catherine Long, sorry. Hello, I'm Mary Catherine Long, and I'm not here to complain about anything. I'm actually here partially as a citizen of Norman, but also in my role as the Norman Neighbors Coordinator for the Neighborhood Alliance, and I just want to express my thanks to all of the city staff who came out for Norman in the know, and also for our Saturday sessions. It was a great opportunity for citizens to engage and visit with city staff. Every department was represented, and both evenings of Norman in the know were great. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Foreman, but I think Jason may need another proclamation because he and his crew set up the tables in the development center, and they actually found those tables, which I think was a Herculean effort. But anyway, it was a great opportunity for people to interact, several people commented how wonderful it was to actually talk with city employees, people who were passionate and excited about the work that they did and wanted to share that with citizens. On a Saturday, the city manager and the finance director came out, and they should really take their show on the road, talking about the budget development, and manager Pyle came out on his birthday to do that, and it was great, and it was very much appreciated. I learned a lot, I've lived in Norman for 44 years, and I've learned more about Norman, just being present at these events, and so I just want to thank Lisa and every city employee who participated in that, it was, it were great events, we have another one coming up on June 1st, we'll be talking about zoning, and I'm sure that we'll be talking about ADUs and short-term rentals, so I'm hoping you'll kind of pimp that for us on Saturday at your meeting. But anyway, I really do want to say thank you, and then as a citizen of Norman, I just want to say thank you for what I just said, but also Friday, I had the opportunity to tour the water treatment plant on, or facility on East Robinson, it was awesome, I learned a lot, the guy that gave me my tour was wonderful, and again, it was another example of somebody in our city who is passionate and excited about what he does, and I just want to encourage all of my friends and neighbors to take advantage of those opportunities. Lastly, I think Norman proved again a couple of weeks ago that we are a city of parades, we had a great pride parade, tons of people were there, creative, fun, lots of love in the air, lots of fun, and I was really excited to see our city employees there, they had a great entry, very creative, very positive, and I just, I'm gonna leave on that note, I just want to express my appreciation for all of you and what you do, and for all of our hard-working city employees.
Dan Munson, Board Six. The federal government is spending money at a record pace when it comes to public transit. Cities like Norman are taking advantage of available grants to replace our older buses. Some cities are establishing brand-new transit programs. The federal government isn't increasing the annual budgets for the operations and maintenance required to both maintain the new and existing transit systems nationwide. Simply put, there just isn't enough money to go around. We have two new electric buses that came with battery warranties that are six years or 300,000 miles, whichever comes first. The replacement of those batteries will likely cost the city of Norman $800,000. How are we gonna pay for that? Did you know that Gilig has a recall on batteries for buses manufactured between 2019 and 2022? We placed the purchase order for our buses in, I believe, June of 2021. So are our buses impacted by the recall for the batteries? If you want to Google Wichita Bus, you can see one on fire. I want to revisit paying fares for buses. If the city of Norman has 350,000 transit riders annually, and 250,000 pay $1.75 per ride, similar to the Oklahoma City fare, we would generate $437,000 annually, or 4.3 million over the course of 10 years. Some people will say that ridership will go down if we start charging fares, in the Go Norman Transit study, three cities were identified by our consultant are charging fares and have significantly higher ridership than we have in Norman, who is fare-free. They are Ames, Iowa, that serves 54,000 people, it has a ridership of 4.3 million people. Huntsville, Alabama, 97,000 people, serve annual ridership, 630,000. Ann Arbor, Michigan, serves 258,000, had an annual ridership of 4.3 million. We should have a surplus in our 2014 Transit's annual maintenance budget, and we should be able to sell off old inventory of our buses, use those funds to purchase fare-collecting equipment. If we try to do a fare-collection program, it's gonna take a minimum of two years to do that. So if we say, hey, we're gonna start charging fares, there's no way we could even do it tomorrow. It'd take two years to get the equipment, to get it installed, to get it tested, to develop a program, two years minimum. We've got the surplus now.
Thank you, sir.
Floyd Carroll.
I wasn't gonna say anything, but I'd like to say it now. So I've been in Norman for around 20 years in the same place. 18 years ago, I put a hopscotch on the sidewalk, and I did it because I couldn't stand up, so I took a piece of tile and laid it down there and painted it, and it's still there. The child that I raised right there, I raised him in the library over here, all those people in that library know him very well. A few of them's had their picture up here taken with the scouts in front of the city council, but one of the problems that the neighbors are talking about now is the needles that's laying around the sidewalks and stuff over there, and I mentioned it to a couple of people, but there is some people over there that's been there for 30 or 40 years that doesn't wanna, they just want a solution to the problem, so I'm up here mentioning it, and I'm talking to the whole city council. But I also, because a homeless person asked him for a cigarette when they was 11 years old, you can remember me sitting on the sidewalk in a chair at Maine and Finley for two years, because I wanted to help that person out. I don't know, the people that's not aware of that, they can show up at my house, and we can discuss it with the neighbors. And then they did put a stop sign on Finley and Maine, and I am a witness to that saving a kid's life, even though they still run that thing three or four times a day, maybe more. And the problem is caused by the sun, I think, because I've been sitting in that chair when they had an accident, and they can't see that intersection real well, but I am glad that they put that stop sign there, and it saved that kid's life. So, I also, well, I just appreciate being able to raise those children there, because that one is 19 now, she's got a baby, and I'll probably raise that child. And that's the greatest part of my life, is grandfather. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Steve Ellis, 633 Reed Avenue. I want to pick up where my spouse Cynthia left off. She was talking about the investment that Norman had to put in in order to end the TIF sales tax diversion in 2019. So that was, as she had gotten to $33 million worth of public investment into the YFAK out of public funds that were not even part of the TIF, and recall that the TIF also kept the $17 million that it had in its fund, so basically Norman put up $50 million in order to develop the area around the Young Family Athletic Center, and it's doing very well right now. The concern is that for the proposed TIF number four, is that we're gonna be taking that, the return from that investment and plowing it back into TIF number four. Notice if you look at the map, the proposed TIF actually reaches south of where they had originally planned to do it, south of Rock Creek Road, and into the area that's already developed because of TIF number two, or maybe despite TIF number two, depending upon who you believe, but it's stuff that's already happening. So there are really two points to be made about that, the first of which is the sort of diversion point that I think you've heard several people mention. It's pretty typical of tax increment financing programs, in order to make them work, you've got to be taking taxes away that you would already have expected to be getting. So the amount of net new development that you're gonna get from TIF number four really has to be discounted, both the money that you get from the area around the Young Family Athletic Center, all of the funds that you would have otherwise got from things at Lloyd Noble, which really, really makes this TIF look like a pretty bad idea. I like to call this the sort of Robert Norman point, because it was a point that he raised on the UNP TIF Oversight Committee. The fact that we're reaching into areas of the city that are already doing well in order to sort of help buy the University of Oklahoma an arena is actually evidence that the arena isn't that good of a deal. I think I've already mentioned what I'm gonna call from now on the sort of Greg Burge point, I've sent it to you in an email, but we're trying to get $481 million that we're ultimately gonna get in the TIF fund if everything goes well, to leverage $230 million, that is a terrible rate of return.
Dinsel, Ward 406, a couple of things. First of all, on Saturday, April 27th, during the spring cleanup, I had the misfortune of engaging with some city workers at the transfer station, and without going into a long story, I am just going to suggest that since this is the, you know, week to honor Public Works folks, that maybe the Public Works folks at the transfer station learn a little bit of grace when they deal with senior citizens that have their legal right to dump their trash on the spring cleanup day, and they are retrained in customer service. It was not a pleasant hour that I engaged with them, it was between the hours of 1:00 and 2:00 on that Saturday, April 27th. That's number one. Number two is, I'm kind of getting a little bit tired of the pontificating up here from some folks, and council becoming their personal soapbox, I don't know what kind of agendas they have, but, you know, I really would like to see the business move along, instead of people just, you know, giving us history lessons on their personal preferences, but, you know, that probably won't stop. And another item, the roundabouts. Now, I've gone through roundabouts from upstate New York, South Jersey, I've driven roundabouts in Wasilla, Alaska. All of those roundabouts are three times the size of the roundabouts in Norman, and they work really well at three times the size of the roundabouts in Norman. From what I've seen with the roundabouts in Norman is, I've seen school buses go up over the middle of them, I've seen big trucks go up over them, they're too small, and I don't know what can change because they're already in the works and being engineered that way, but roundabouts work when they're huge, they don't work so well when they're really small, they're too tight. And that's all.
Evan.
Everyone, Evan Dunn, Ward 7. Oh, it's been a great night. I love to hear about all the awesome events and the news from what's been happening in people's lives. I want to talk about what's happening internationally, though, and all of these college protests about the Israeli-Gaza war, and I want to bring some images to kind of shed some light on what's happening. You don't see these in the news, but these are four little babies that are obviously They didn't vote for Hamas, they, they were simply brought into this world and deprived of the resources that they needed. Now, I shouldn't even have to be up here saying this, the pro-life factions should be defending these people, they should be defending these children. The, the amount of disingenuousness that we can exhibit as human animals is stunning, we are so desirous of being cozy and psychologically shut off from the realities of the world, and hmm, I find it very hard to do that, I find it very hard to desensitize myself to the events that are further driving wedges and driving people further apart. We are allowing those young people to have the moral high ground, we are allowing them to assume that the world is just that simple, but when you see these pictures, it is that simple. We're funding, we're supporting that. It isn't that simple. People in positions of power and people who are making decisions, you have to take into account a lot of different factors. I don't know, it's hard for everyone, but there are certain lines.